Have a motion to approve the agenda first.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Now we'll go to the minutes.
Okay, I did change that. I had the wrong Senate file number. Do I fix that? That you presented last week. I just had it transversed, so. So I got, I just changed the number, yep.
Okay. I got his name too.
Oh, did you want me to put it in there?
If you want to, you can.
We did, I didn't catch your name last week, so.
Bob Q.
Can you spell that?
C U E.
Okay, I'm gonna adjust our minutes and say that it was you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Please call all neighbor.
That's right, your old neighbor.
Oh, I should've asked you.
I know Haley's parents. You, I live right next to my brother-in-law at the swimming pool. He came with Danny Albert.
Oh, okay. Yes, I know I've seen you. Then you've been with them, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
He came out while, that one time I was, I only had swim trunks on, so.
Wow. No judging.
Did you guys have a chance to look at the minutes?
Did, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
How about one correction real quick?
The correction?
Yep. Very bottom at the end. Uh, when we went out to close session and Tippit moved, Tippit moved, vol. 2nd, to adjourn at nine thirty-two AM.
Oh, it was that?
I think it was more like twelve thirty.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I seen.
Okay, yep, no, I missed that.
Now, we have a motion over here. Do I have a second with the correction?
Second with the correction.
Okay. Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
Okay.
I have twelve twelve PM on mine. I wonder if I fixed that afterward. First that I sent you. Cause when I went in and fixed the section, I might've. Does I?
The one I printed last night was not fixed.
Okay. I got it, good.
Ninety-five canvas. Are you gonna handle it?
Yep.
Okay.
It's gonna be an easy one. We'll break Bruce in slowly.
I appreciate that.
And Ron, but Ron's been here through one of them. Okay. So I'll just go through and read the amount of votes. So Randy Johnson, he had ninety-one, and there was two absentees for a ninety-three cast. Shane Light, eighty-five. For a total of eighty-five. And we had Scott Huber, this one is the other position. He had a hundred and fifteen with two absentees for a total of a hundred and seventeen. And then Shane Light was the write-in winner with thirty-eight. And then we had scattering write-ins of eight. We had fifteen under votes. That is the tally. If you have any questions or wanna look at anything. So in order, Bruce, in order to make the write-in, they have to have so much percentage of the votes cast to make it on the canvas.
Okay.
So that's why there's so many different scatterings and different names. Sometimes they'll have different spellings of the same person, and then they'll have to decide if the intent was that same person.
Oh.
And then we'll, so on a bigger election, there's different things we have to do.
Okay. That makes sense, huh? Thank you.
So if you guys approve that canvas, I just need a motion to approve what was read, and then we'll have some things to sign for the abstract and then their certificates.
I'll make the motion to approve the canvas.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
And then with every election, um, the day after, the Secretary of State will send out a mass email to all counties, and they'll randomly pick a precinct. Obviously, this was gonna be just the City of Urbana's precinct, and everything was successful. The hand count matches the machine count. So I just need you to acknowledge that.
I'll acknowledge the, uh, what do they call it?
Make a motion, acknowledge the post.
Post-election audit.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote on the acknowledgement.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
Okay, and then number six. With the regional mental health stuff, I know I was confused on some of that retention pay. So I'm gonna probably have to get this budget amendment number three done sooner than later because that retention pay isn't just at their end of July. If they stay through February, they get a lump sum in March. If they stay through March, so we're gonna need that. I'm just demanding authority.
Well, yeah, but we do get reimbursement.
Yes, but what this amendment does is that way
We get suspended authority now.
We'll send that in and get reimbursement, so. So if you can do April first at nine thirty, I should be able to get that in the paper and.
Can I get a motion to?
Uh, I'll make the motion to set the date for the budget amendment number three of April first.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
And I'll probably send an email out to all departments, just letting them know too if there's something that they absolutely need as well.
Somebody has to know what needed something like that.
Um, I know the sheriff, I have to put some in for their withholdings because of the current, yeah. Oh, you found your letter?
That's on my record.
Okay. You wanna sign these?
Yeah.
President of the board of championship? I wasn't the president.
Or your chair, that's what it's called.
President sounds pretty good, though. Just put a run.
Yep.
And you want these two to sign for you?
Yes, yep, cause that's where I changed the salary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then your parcels are on.
There's two more here.
Thank you.
How about report?
I had a couple of meetings last week. The first one was the, um, Iowa Work Force. It was a Zoom, both of these were Zooms, and unfortunately, um, the audio was terrible. I couldn't understand, I don't think maybe twenty-five percent of what was said. And people continued to type in, we can't hear you, we see your lips moving, and they were asking for volunteers for committees and the whole catastrophe, and I didn't volunteer because I didn't know what I was getting into. So, um, it went, I mean, it was, it wasn't a real long meeting, but it was long enough, but when you can't participate in any way, shape, or form, it was kind of
Really long.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know, um, and so they were aware of the problems, but so what do I have to report on it? Not a lot. And then I sat in on the EC cog, uh, as well, which, uh, we could hear that one fine, that worked out well. Yeah, yeah, so those, those are the two that I had.
Uh, the first one, Thursday was a busy one. I had three on Thursday. Uh, the first one was the, uh, the health region meeting. Uh, I went to the first part, and then I had another one. I did have a chance after the, uh, meeting to speak with May. They, her current group, uh, was appointed to do one of the, the new positions coming up under the new management, uh. So it, uh, one of the questions I spoke to her about was, uh, are four ladies that are currently with the region, uh, one for certain, possibly two of them may get moved forward and keep a job. She was very certain that the funding for the hub would not continue. That was, that was kind of the biggest things there. Uh, and the second one, uh, it was a Zoom meeting, uh, and the audio was good in that one, uh, but it was with HACAP. They've got, I think, the two head people are retiring this year. So they're gonna, one of them for certain, uh, but two retirements. HACAP, kinda, kinda like the Housing Authority folks, they serve, uh, huge, huge amount of people in the area. Uh, from their financial report, uh, once again, like the housing people, they do a very good job. Just not knowing a lot about them, uh, very informative meeting on oh, the, the number of things. You know, I knew they had the HACAP Head Start Program, they've got the meals throughout the county, here and Bell Plain. Just the, the number of, uh, early early start programs for little kids that they run is, uh, it's just all pretty amazing. And then the number of houses that they provide assistance to, whether it's, uh, heating or roofs or whatever, uh, very amazing work. And I think that, uh, they get a very good bang for their buck. Very good organization. And then the third one with you two guys.
Had safety meeting Wednesday up here. Judy Haymaker come up here, and then she had, uh, graphs about oh, how many claims we had of injuries, you know, so it was interesting.
I will, my definitely reduced.
Yep, strains and stuff like that. And of course, I had Eastern Hou- Housing Trust Fund. Uh, some of the grants are coming in, and we have a gotta have a lot of, we have a lot of applications to get rid of the money, but we haven't sat down yet to decide, um, just, uh, to let it go. And then, of course, EZ cog, you guys sat in on that. Hope that was kinda interesting.
That was very interesting.
It was.
I got the paperwork here that you guys can share, take home, or read it here after the meeting, you know, on both of them. You kinda have a trust fund, how much money they got, where it goes. One of the things in the last couple of months, it hasn't been so much, but, uh, EZ cog does loan money to businesses. And that, you'll see that in the report.
I didn't know they got involved in that.
Yep, and you can go back and you can see how, you know, who it is, how they're current, or some are not current. Some are in default, but.
But don't they also have a program if, if for towns? Or maybe that's where the businesses is where if they have a house, it needs to be torn down and rehabilitated. Is that part of that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's all your different, uh, oh, we're gonna get uh, Community Economic Development Report, Housing Report, Transportation and Transit Report, Environment Services.
Okay.
You know. So, I mean, it's, it's quite informative, you know, their monthly newsletter and all that, and we haven't, like I said, it's been, I bet, five, six months since somebody has applied for a loan on a business. But you'd be kinda, be surprised how many people have a loan with EZ cog right now.
Yeah, I had no idea they did that. I didn't know that was a resource.
So, I guess that's it for the reports. Now, well, instead of letting you sit here all, I don't know how much we're gonna get into the budget work again.
I have a few questions that we can, if you wanna listen.
Just wanna know, I kind of asked you before, you know, as a, as a group, if you wanna make a statement with Senate File three seventy-six. I know that I counted today, and there's comments, and they're gonna have a subcommittee meeting from noon to twelve-thirty today. And there's a hundred and fifty comments. Uh, Woodbury had a couple, their supervisors, DeCana County's had a supervisor, and there's been several different counties throughout the state, and, but you were telling me that you've heard good news as far as defeating that.
Yes. I was kinda surprised that it became a thousand and twelve-hundred bills that are introduced every start of the session. I was not assured, but I was told that they don't think it'll even get off the ground. This is funnel week, and they don't think, not at all, not even close.
Cause Clemish tried to do this last year, tried to sneak one in, and there were two attempts. One was by Next Era Support, and one was by Bright Future Iowa last year.
Yes, I did not, on my first initial phone call with, uh, our representative, Tom Gerhold, he told me the name of the individual from Northwest Iowa that introduced this bill. I didn't write his name down or anything, but he said he don't believe that nobody's for.
Cause on the subcommittee, Clemish is, you know, Next Era's donated money, if you look at it, a, a lot of energy companies, and Botinelli or something, I think he's round the poke. I, I don't have this pronunciation right. He also has been given money from Next Era and, you know, his campaign finances. Which is not illegal, but kinda makes you wonder when you get two out of three people on the subcommittee, and I, the third guy the third guy researched into where he's gotten his money, but i- i- it would just be a detriment to our state.
I don't believe, even if they would have to somehow sneak it through, our governor would not sign it.
She wouldn't? Cause I, I know she's a proponent of.
I don't think she would.
Okay.
The main reason it's taken, you know, our responsibility away from us.
Sure.
It removes all local control.
Right. You don't wanna do that.
And, and that's where this exact sort of thing should be, is with all local control.
Cause every county's a little bit different.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, from the topographies and those type of things. You know, and the other thing is, God only gave us so much soil. And if we take it all up, you, you can't remake it. And there's just been, like I said, mechanics, we all have that problem where they've got a lot of fiberglass, you know, are those people gonna have to declare bankruptcy? I don't know if I mentioned last week, but when the company was out of Chicago, was gonna help clean up all that fiberglass, they sent them with three shop backs to try to clean up while it's spread over acres, neighbors and stuff like that. So. Okay. One other question. Uh, we live between Whittaker's Lake and, uh, and Tobin's Cabin driveway. The signs up there are kinda deceiving when you turn in, cause our driveway, a lot of people will come up our driveway, which is wrong, and they get behind us and, you know, grandkid, I mean, there's trees back there, there's a little pathway, there's trees, but you know, when people, Ron, you probably know it's better than, than most of us, is once you kinda get lost, uh, you drive faster. And, and, you know, there's a couple times where the trees, we've got a golf cart path back there and that type of thing. And we've had to help people back out because, you know, it's only about the width of a golf cart and that type of thing. Is there any way you can look at those signs? Cause it just seems like people are gonna wanna turn up our driveway rather than to go the extra, what, quarter of a mile, you know, on the other side, the west side of the Rock House to get to Whittakers, or to get to Tobin's. There's a lot of people that are, that are mixed up, but, and.
I'm sure Shelby's probably watching our meeting out today. That's kinda in her ballpark. So if she sees this, she'll take a look at it.
Cause you see it, you see an arrow there, and it's for the, the next road, and people wanna drive up, and we've had several instances, and sometimes when grandkid, cause like, they get behind our house, go right by our, our, our garage, and it's like, oh, man. We have grandkids that come out there to play, we've got dogs and so.
Do you have, uh, do you have a sign that says private drive, or is that?
We do have a little sign that says.
Says I, but that doesn't matter.
I, I think the confusion, cause I, not this past, a week ago, I was out to Whittakers Lake, uh, and the of course, I know which drive it is, uh, but it would be very easy to get down their driveway instead of the one for Whittakers Lake.
Right, I mean.
It's super simple.
As you, as you come from the east to get to Whittakers, you gotta go over that little bit of hill where the Rock House is, where my brother-in-law lives. And, and some people just get confused, and, and if you imagine that that's kind of a nice straight road, and people aren't driving fifty-five always as they get in there, but, and we even had, had to help people with a, a horse trailer to go up Tobin's, and there's not a whole lot of ways to turn around, and there was a couple of young girls, I was out working in the yard, and they back, tried to back all the way down and got the trailer into the ditch there, and we had to get a you know, skidle or help pull out, and so, anyway, nothing major, but.
As I said, I'm sure she'll look at this one. If it has to be signage changed or newer or brighter, I, I'm sure she'll be on top of it.
Well, the signs are big enough, but it's just people panic and.
I just don't think they know which one goes back in there.
Right. And, and you know, Tobin's Cabin, there's, there's, well, Whittakers has a lot of horse riders, and Tobin's, there, there's a lot of, you'd be surprised how many people will drive back there, especially mushroom hunting time, hunting time and those things, so it's, it's pretty busy. That's all, all I got for today, but, and, and if you can, like I said, if you can let, send us, you know, let them know Senate File three seventy-six, and hopefully they'll listen to us.
I can share those two emails if you all wanna send something. But you have to do it soon if they're talking about it at noon.
They gotta talk at noon today.
Ron mentioned that yesterday.
Should we send an email? Do you have Tom's?
I have Tom Hinchell's, but then we have, um, the Sires to touch as part of our county.
You have Dave's email too? Should we just, uh, after the meeting, get with Haley and direct an email to all three of them?
Not a letterhead or something?
That would be. We're not in support of this?
We can, I mean, I really wish my opinion, the most of them.
Okay.
Even some won't that, in, in our district, or take care of us. I even called them, so.
I've not talked to a single person this far.
I was just curious on, uh, the Blairstown corner, any more updates on what may or may not be happening there as far as signage and li- and lights and?
Signage is done. It's been done since November.
I see, it's been done that way, so.
Okay, it's got the amber lights on both sides of the highway.
Okay.
You know, when you're coming out of an, or coming south, it's on both sides. The only thing that hasn't been done yet is the stop sign that I want that's lit up. Understand, flashing down there, that's on state property.
Oh, okay.
Understand, so we have to get the state's permission just for the stop sign, but
Okay.
You know, with the, with, not amber, but red flashing.
Red flashing, yeah.
Is that the one living around the sign or the one on top? The state has to make that determination?
Yeah, they'll say what we can put on there. And as for the lights, it's still.
That's still up there?
Yeah, because they, they told Myron he could put one light on the north side, a destination light, like we got on the south side. I'm not happy with that. I want more than that.
Yeah, well, when you come up over the hill from the west, you know, it's, it's quick.
Yep.
You're there quick.
Yep.
Well, we lost all of our landmarks going through there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, the Atkins Corner has five, the Norway Corner has five, and you get up to the Blairstown Corner, which has probably a lot more traffic than the Norway Corner has, with the high school and all the catastrophe in there.
So this is the, what we're at right now, waiting for the state.
And however long that takes.
Been doing this since August. You know.
And I knew we'd be kicking this dumb road.
I know, I just.
Just crossing our fingers if nothing happens there on that corner.
I've called in Ames, and and we said, you know.
Only do so much.
Okay, glad you were.
So you wouldn't be offended if I leave?
No, go right in. Uh, if you get a chance, go up through the port and take a look where we used to live. Across the street from him.
Yeah.
We sold that after Dad passed away.
Okay.
You won't know it's, other than the house is in the same place. Wow.
Yeah.
It's been a lot of money.
Oh. Mom's still alive?
Nope.
Nope, she passed away.
She passed away, oh geez. Over fifteen years ago.
Okay.
Dad passed away about four years ago.
Okay. Yeah, I guess it's been about forty years since.
Yeah.
Yeah, oof da poof da. Time goes fast. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
See you guys.
So if you look in your packets, I've provided you kind of a notice that I have to go, everything has to be uploaded to the state tomorrow. I reached out to a couple yesterday of our cities that they have to have it proposed, so I just made them, made them aware that, a reminder. Cause once that's all up there tomorrow, then I can download it and start my mailing process. But, so, that's kind of an example of my explanation down below, but I had to summarize it even more, cause it only let me have three hundred characters. But where it says like the twelve percent increase, to me, that's just, it's really confusing, so the Department of Management had an explanation on how, cause you guys might get some calls too, to be able to explain it. It's based on current year, what we're collecting on now, what the dollars we brought in off of current levies. So then it takes, that middle column would be the increased value if you use last year's dollars for levies. And then what we're asking, yeah, that one, so. Even though our levies are actually lowered than last year, at, at the bottom, see how it shows that twelve percent? Cause it's based on the dollars that are bringing in. That is our county public notice, but what individuals will receive in the mail, their statements, so like Bruce, you'll get the county, Ben Committee Schools, and the City of Norway. Those three entities will be on your statement.
Okay.
Whereas Tracy won't have the city, cause he's a little in the township, but Ron will have like Ben Chelsberg, Benton County. So each statement that goes out to those individuals is gonna be based on their taxation as a whole. But it's nothing to do with their individual property on those statements, it's as their counties as a blanket. They tried to make it a little more clear on the statement this year, because one of those auditors complained and had legislation change some of that.
Last year's was, was, uh.
It was a nightmare. We had people coming in thinking this was their personal tax statement to pay a bill, and it's just really confusing.
We had that at the city level back when Wendy Erger was our clerk. Um, she tried to explain it to the people that would come to the meeting, she says, I know this is what it says, but this is not what.
And that's kind of what last year, it was just.
Right, people, and people were thinking that we were setting their property taxes up.
Right. Right.
We don't have any, yeah, yeah.
So, that's, you know, we're paying that mailing.
I know what you mean.
I paid the deposit for the postage and then we'll get another bill for like the envelope's costs and all that other stuff, so... I try to summarize it on our software so that if people have multiple parcels, we'll minimize how many statements they'll get if they're in the same district. So that was just one thing I wanted to point out. And then I have the Department of Man, the whole budget in there, and I highlighted the areas. I still have to go back in once we finalize stuff. As if I keep making tweaks, my ending balances, how I estimate, all that stuff, so... That's kind of where I'm at. I won't do all that final work until you guys act on some of that other stuff. And then, just like Ron said, I have a question like, so if they're not gonna fund the hub, you still want me to leave that in just in case regardless? Or do you want me to take that dollar amount out?
I would take it out.
Good.
If we're not gonna get reimbursed for that.
She was very certain of that.
What a hot order I got this last night.
Should be paid one through fifteen. And then that also has the three columns.
Yes.
What we ended our fiscal year in, current year, and then ask them. So if there's anything on those that you question or want me to explain, that's just basically a summary of all the reports that we've gone through.
This one here, where you got it highlighted.
Yeah, see, that's all formula-based, like if you look at the revenue page, page five.
I'm just going by actual, twenty-three, twenty-four, we have twenty-seven million reserved. And then this year, we have nothing, because it's not, we're not done yet?
We're not done, because this all ties in to my spreadsheets here.
Okay.
So this is what I'm gonna put in for estimating July first, twenty twenty-five to end.
Okay.
So like, once I get that amendment number three and know kind of really where we're at, then I plug that in.
What number is that?
Page. So see, that's, that's where that ended, so that's where that falls. So then, once I get all that, that amount will come into this place.
Okay.
And then so forth.
Okay.
So then, and then this last page.
But that's all monies, right?
Every fund, every balance, yeah. And so then that'll affect what we're estimating next, the ending of this twenty-six.
We have a shortfall, right?
Um, some of those, it won't be negative and, because it's, it's not showing my other balance on there. So once all that is, there will not be any negatives.
Okay, okay.
We should be fine with it.
That's what I thought.
But if you look at, like, these are the things to look at. Revenues coming in and what we're budgeting, so that's why there's a negative. Because that's the amount, if we were to spend every dollar, that's gonna come out of our reserves and the fund balances.
Put that one out to me?
That front page?
I'm sure you did it.
So, the revenues, this is all revenues, not just some taxes, that's...
That's everything.
Adjusting, and that means, you know, some of that's not a given if we don't get approved for grants.
Sure.
So that's our revenue totals coming in, but we're planning to spend that.
Yep.
And so that's why this is a negative, because you're taking advantage of those fund balance reserves. And the trend that we've been doing, that's where we really need to be conscious of and stop trying to use our reserves, because once that's gone, it's gonna be gone. Those reserves need to be there for budget amendments throughout the year, emergencies that come up that we can amend, because we can't change the levies at that point, but we could use the spending authority out of those funds. That's why you hear some of the counties on the news, because they probably didn't have the luxury of having some fund balances like we do.
Right.
So they are struggling big time.
Yeah, I know they are. Two of them from EasyCog here last week. But I'm trying to remember. The only grant money that we got in there yet is the ARPA fund, and that's kind of peanuts.
That's pretty much, after this year, it's not gonna be much.
And then is that, uh, for the conservation, the Sue Donovan, is that figured in that too?
Yeah, so she can use the interest off that one.
Yeah, but we can't touch that money either.
No, but that is in that, it's in all the other.
Right. And I'm just wondering, how, how many more grants do we have, of money that...
That tree grant, but that should be, depending on how much we get done this year, I might have to, out of that, seven hundred and fifty?
We don't have that yet, do we?
She gets, that's one of those, we spend the money and then we get reimbursed, like we did the watershed.
Yes, and see, that's where, you know, I, on EasyCog yesterday, these guys heard it too, that I asked a question, you know, was that money suspended right now with Trump? And, and that one is not.
Yes, I know, we did look into that.
Yes, that one is not.
Because that was a concern, because if we kept paying and not getting reimbursed.
Yes.
But same with that FEMA for the Atkins.
That is...
So that's three hundred and fifty thousand that...
That's on hold.
Yeah. And we didn't charge them interest on that.
No, I know.
But, yeah. So then also like Myron's stuff, that's passed through the state and federal.
That's where I was getting hung up, I thought, wow, we got a big difference here.
Yeah, because you have to show that.
And then Myron's, what do we call it? His surplus rollover?
Well, he has like, yeah...
That shows up twice, and I thought...
Because he has to do different things with the DOT codes and do adjustments throughout the year, so...
And that's why his budget appears to be so, uh, it's confusing, his budget is confusing.
Because we don't levy in secondary roads, he gets a transfer from General Basic, and he gets a transfer from Rural Basic and Lost.
And gas, yeah.
And then his, yeah, his federal, his cert tax on the gas. So that's where all those revenues come into him.
And then I got, trying to, and I went out and talked to him. He's, uh, he was gonna put together the, the total number of if, here's what's in the budget, but here's what comes back in. And if you, if you look at it like that, uh, the way I was looking at it, the budget's much better. Because if you look at it as this is what we're spending and we're not getting it back, you think, holy smokes, this is...
Same with that watershed, he always had to show that huge amount for revenues. But Myron will also come back in here and do his DOT bu- budget work too. So they have, he has the county budget and then he has to do the DOT.
But his excesses rollover, right?
Yeah, it stays in his fund.
Stays in his fund.
Whereas other departments, if they have excess, it stays in that fund balance. It doesn't mean they get that spending authority next year unless they committed funds.
Unless they budget for it to...
Yes, unless they had like, committed for like a building, conservation, put fifty thousand away.
Okay.
And then, say, year five, they put in two hundred and fifty. And that's where we'll do a resolution at the end, and you'll see at the bottom of those pages, it'll say what's restricted and committed funds, like, and that's, that's why those different amounts are in there.
And I'm guessing like in the, the page one of fifteen, uh, in the, what's restricted, there's a big number under twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm guessing most of that is Myron's.
Under, are you looking at this page?
Yeah.
Oh, down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you go to the page, uh, thirteen, that's kind of where the important numbers are at the bottom.
Okay.
Down in there is where I'll put non-spendable, restricted, or committed.
Gotcha. So we've, we've gotta wait for those?
Yes, and so like general supplemental, like some of these funds are really restricted in how we use them. So most of those are gonna be restricted. But like, if we had committed funds out of General Basic for different things, we'll put that column, that amount. Same with Rural Basic. Capital projects, a lot of times, we'll commit project money for different things. Obviously debt service, that's all due to our radio project payments. So the only reason you can levy for debt service is when we have bonds and stuff, so... And then that all permanent funds, that's kind of some of those, like the other, all, all capital projects, that's those like Fund Fifteen, when we did the capital projects funds for like transportation building and all that. Some of that we have excess, and then the capital projects for conservation land acquisition. So that's the two hundred thousand there, and the seventy-eight thousand, five thirteen is what we have left in net. Capital project fund for the county grounds and maintenance. So this is kind of a big page, because it shows the expenditure summary, and then page, page, I would say six, and thirteen are really good ones to look at. Because that's kind of a grand scheme of it, you're looking at all the revenues. And then page thirteen sums up those expenditure summaries by, by service area. And that's where we come into play to figure out those ending balances and stuff. But like Ron just pointed out, that one, so... That's why I ask every department to look over their numbers again, because of, of things like that. You guys can look over that all department one again.
I'll probably be in your office again, asking questions.
That's fine, I'd rather you ask questions and really understand it.
I'll try.
Will we get to a point where we look at it and to keep from going into the reserves, where we say, okay, everybody, you gotta cut ten percent? Two percent, point five percent?
Some counties are making, I think Chittisaw County was one that they're cutting, like, an employee out of each department.
Wow.
So I don't know how bad off they were.
Can you, uh, if we had a balanced budget, so we were not touching the reserves?
Well, you think about it, are you gonna cut six million dollars out somewhere? Or, you know, some of that, we're gonna get more back with the, but that's what I'm saying, if you look at that.
Yeah, six million nine hundred and eight thousand. Is that what, yeah, that's the number.
Yep, because you're only bringing in revenue thirty-five, but not all of that is tax dollars either. Tax dollars are pretty much, you know, give or take a little bit if there's abatements and things that come up throughout the year, but the use of money, licenses and permits, some of that intergovernmental stuff isn't always a given.
No, but we have to act on the numbers that we know.
Yes.
And these, that's what we go on.
So we got, that bottom number's gotta go down.
Like I said, we've just been fortunate that we had some good cushions in our funds.
I think we need to...
And offsetting it with ARPA really helped this last four years, some of those once.
We need to draw a line in the sand, basically, and say, this is it.
Make this number work.
I realize we're not gonna get that...
But it's something to work on.
Yes.
If the state keeps reducing our levies.
That's...
Reducing levies and then adding on all the stuff that we have that they're taking away that we have to...
We're fighting at the legislation, because even that General Basic maximum levy was three point five, it's been like that for how many years? And we're still forced at that, but look at all the increased costs.
They, with their unfunded mandates.
Right. Which make them look good.
And just the reg- operating costs, equipment costs, everything, I mean, and if you wanna continue to provide the services, you have to have the funding to do so.
Well, but I, 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 it took me a little bit to get there. Haley has to, what, what she turns in is worst case.
Doesn't mean you have to spend it, and you guys can allocate so much. In June, when we do that resolution before July first starts, the board allocates funds. Sometimes I've seen him in the past, done half until half the year's up. But then you always have those departments, sometimes at the very end, go on shopping sprees.
Yeah, that's the one that I wanna keep, shopping sprees, because that's just...
Yeah.
I mean, when we're looking at this bottom number here and somebody's going out and spending money.
That's why when you see the claims report and look at that stuff.
Yeah, that kind of stuff is irresponsible.
Yeah.
It needs to stop. I've seen it too often.
Well, you guys have some food for thought to look over some stuff.
Oh, boy.
If there's any other kind of reports that might, you guys want me to run, different ways, let me know.
Well, that's the number I was looking for.
I can probably just go in and with what I got right now and do those ending balances if you wanna look at that a little better. Like predictions.
Okay.
Of what, because I have to predict what we're gonna end this current fiscal year at.
Okay.
Taking into account those amendments we've done. And then showing that in, that'll help decide where we're gonna be at the end of fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, yeah, that would be all right.
But I'll tweak a few things again, just what we discussed.
If, if you're gonna do that, could we have a work session meeting? Because I'm gonna need it explained to me, I don't catch on that quick to it.
So what I'm...
I don't have any problems with that, because I think, anytime we can get clarification on this, makes it easier to explain.
The way she has to lay it out.
Yeah.
And then I get lost in it.
Yeah.
So like I said, the first step was I have to have the levies submitted to the Department of Management by tomorrow was the deadline. All cities, schools, and counties have to have that. Because that's the amount, so that's telling the general public, we are not gonna go above that levy. Which, we had no choice, because that's what we were allowed for General Basic and General, or Rural Basic.
Right.
General Sup, I left as same as last year, because that one was within, it was pretty good.
Okay.
So, so that part, that's just the first step. So we'll have to have that public hearing, March twenty-sixth, and that's just to allow the public for comments on that maximum levy. Then the next step is our budget hearing for adoption. So then what I do is provide all these numbers, and then we have to publish this front page in the paper. So, and that's how it puts it in by service areas. So once that's published and it's in the official newspapers, and the budget's adopted, we cannot go back in and go above that, but we can cut.
We can cut, okay. Was that when the phone calls start, or was when that gets published?
Sometimes, I mean, we haven't had a whole lot, really. I try to put like explanations, um, you know, like that radio tower is still a good chunk, for that maintenance cost.
You don't have the raises.
Yeah, this is all, it's, whatever department head's submitted, it's all in there.
That's what you sent?
Yes, and that's accounted for in these numbers, because that's how those department heads turned in their budgets, remember?
Yeah.
So, that's with those amounts. And I don't know if you guys wanted to individually talk to departments? If you had questions, concerns, I mean, now's your time to kind of speak up and ask more questions.
Well, I think if we were to, you were to come as close as you can with those numbers that you don't know, and then we were to have a, a work session.
Looking at all that?
Looking at all that. That would, that would help me greatly decide where we need to go in and say, okay, we need you to cut this much. We need this much. And, and I think we should leave it, we could make suggestions, but I think we probably need to leave it... But I think we probably need to leave it to a depart, to a department head. I think we're at the point where we need to, instead of expand, 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 I think we just need to maintain for a while. Because I, this, the bottom line number to me has got to come down. So we're not using any of the reserves at some point. Because we don't wanna end up in the position.
Well, I mean.
That some of these other folks are in.
Yeah.
And.
Well, the reserves aren't meant for us to keep pulling from.
Right.
They're not, that's not the reason for the reserve, the reserves, but we all know what the reserves is for.
You wanna have money between July and September when those tax collections comes in, we have to have operating money.
Right, yeah, so, but that bottom number, we gotta be inside of that. Because that's just, we're already, we've already dug the hole, we gotta quit digging.
Right, and some of that, like you said, those unfunded mandates, we put the spending authority there.
Mm-hmm.
Hope you don't use it, but.
You don't, you don't operate your personal budget that way.
Or you think about my election budget. I mean, that's a good chunk because I have to plan for specials and all that, but how often do we get that? And then that, that's not spent. So, like I said, this is worst case scenario and every dollar is spent.
But we need to plan on worst case scenario with, with where we're at. And then in the end, if it's better, then, okay, here we go.
We have more money to go back to our reserve.
The goal is to have like twenty-five percent reserves.
Is that what, okay, twenty-five percent, sure.
Because you think about breaking the year up in a quarter. So twenty-five percent would get you from July first till September thirtieth for taxes.
So what are we looking at for a budget meeting, workshop?
A workshop?
Yeah.
Well, next week will be.
Last week's terrible.
I think, I mean, because you guys will have time because the first hearing's the twenty-sixth. I won't, I set a regular budget hearing. The regular budget has to be adopted by April thirtieth.
Okay.
So you have some time.
You got a little time?
Yep.
Because I got a funeral this, the rest of this week and stuff, so.
So, because I know next week will be shot.
Yeah. Farmer in town.
Well, he hasn't responded back, but I'm trying to reschedule it. Unless you wanted to go alone.
Well, that's kinda unfair.
Yeah.
They're usually a very easy group to talk with, but it's still.
Oh, and I did move those two deputies around, so that's reflected in there.
The eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth of March, there's no school. So anything that can go on, on those three days, I wouldn't have to worry about time.
Nineteenth?
March eighteenth and nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
Seven, seventeen is Monday, St. Patty's Day.
That's a Wednesday.
All right, I'll be, I'm coming back from Texas on Monday.
The seventeenth.
Nineteenth and we'll work. Nineteenth, I've got an appointment that's gonna take all day.
Well, the eighteenth, if you have your regular meeting, we could do a budget work session after it.
I could do, I could do that.
Yeah, I, yeah, because I don't have.
Then you're already here.
Yeah, we're here and I, I've got nothing going on, so the rest of the day would be fine for me.
You gotta come back on the eighteenth night.
What's that one?
Assessor.
Well, do you wanna make your work session later in the day or? You guys could just do homework all day long.
On the eighteenth, I didn't have that written down. Oh, the assessor, oh, yeah, that's at six thirty. Yeah, forgot about that. That's why I'm writing them down.
I'm gonna do the same because I left.
I put Outlook reminders on my computer.
Eighteenth evening.
I don't care about, because I gotta, I gotta drive back anyway, so if we, you know, if we just stay after the first session and then.
That's true.
Go home, make my martini and come back, I'll be fine.
Don't be quoting the paper for goofy stuff, right, Ron?
That's right.
All right, we can plan on that and I'll get, I'll get that part tweaked because once I know what this next amendment involves, I'm gonna take that into account for that.
Then this gives you plenty of time to get all this.
Sure.
Yeah, they probably don't let you be a week late on that.
What?
Sending everything to the state.
Oh, no.
No.
The only reason you can get a budget, like a extension is if like the newspaper didn't publish and it's, it's something beyond my control. Or like if somebody died or saved.
Juvenile detention.
I haven't heard.
I haven't either, but.
I know, I'm still.
I don't think.
You follow me?
Mm-hmm.
That might be something you're gonna add on to your budget amendment.
Oh, yeah, I know, if we have to pay all that.
So would it be smart to put it on there?
Possibly.
Just, just food for thought.
Because that particular individual is back, right?
Supposed to be coming back, I don't know.
Yeah.
I.
Yeah, I need to look at medical examiners too because we've had quite a few here lately.
Oh, boy.
But yeah, that's all. I'll do a, I run reports by service area and really look through it.
Okay. And that's one of them that I'm concerned about. Okay, is that it for today then?
No, I'm also having, Derek's helping me with the bonds on elected officials. We have a blanket coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Because with the new township clerk coming in, he was asking questions, so we were looking. So I found in the old minutes where we added the townships, so our blanket coverage is a hundred grand or whatever on every individual. But do you remember that Heartland meeting when they said we were supposed to individually name them out?
Mm-hmm.
So I had our insurance guy come over and talk with us, because like the treasurer, we have a separate one. But if you look at the code, to me, I think she could be just covered under a blank one and put her name individually. And maybe my, I mean, because like who signs the checks at the banks or, I don't know. And I, it's not gonna save us a ton, maybe a little bit, but I just wanna make sure with that. You can have insurance in lieu of bonds that we're doing it properly. So Derek's gonna help me look into that because that would be renewed by July first.
That was a little hard to follow at that.
It was.
And the one said that you, with the insurance in lieu of the bond, but it was like you have to, it was.
Yeah.
I had a little trouble picking up what they were putting down.
And so I'm not the only one, other county auditors are questioning it too because when, when elected officials take their oath. Their certificate says required to bond or not bond. So that's kinda like my book, book of bonds.
Mm-hmm.
Who signs those oaths type of thing.
Okay.
That's kind of our record, but the actual insurance policy does not list, it just lists it as a position, so.
That should be good now with them.
That's what I'm thinking. I might, you want me to send that to you too? Because you're an insurance guy.
Yeah, if you want to, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Charlie's been really good at helping. Just things like the more I'm in office, the more I'm like. Hasn't been done it one way, things change, do they need to alter that or?
Can I say I have a question on, with the towers and stuff and the construction and the repairs and everything, is that all done? Because I had a request from someone about a road that they had to redo. They were wondering about money for it. Park Drive.
Up there?
Yeah. It was done with gravel and then they had to go back in and do the seal code to match the rest of it. And we didn't know if there was any funds left to help cover that.
I would say no.
I would say no. That's why I needed an answer, so that's what I'll tell them, say.
No.
Okay.
But that would be. That would be Raycom's deal to cover, wouldn't it?
No, because of when you were married.
That was.
You contacted me.
Yeah, I did a couple of times.
And secondary roads were the ones that hauled the gravel down there.
Yep.
And used a skid loader to put it out. And that was kind of the part he had, you know, and then I also had cell site. They cut tracks, I remember, on the south side of the driveway pretty bad.
Bad, yeah.
And I had them come out and till it and.
And see.
Yes.
And that all turned out fine. It was just when they, when they came back in, when, when Prairie Roads or whatever, they came in last year. They, when they put the seal code in the, in the gravel on, it was a twenty-four hundred and thirty-six dollar bill for that section.
Okay.
And they, the city was just wondering since, you know. I said, well, I'll ask the questions, so.
Well, I can write that one down too because. I printed that off, I gotta think where I put it.
We're still holding that last one too, right?
Yes. They're not in a hurry to have a meeting. I have it somewhere.
While you're looking at that, on the unfinished Sunday seemed to be the day for the questions of. When are we gonna have the clock back at the courthouse? I got like four people asking that on Sunday.
That's been popular, I get asked that too. The last email we got.
Aren't they gonna display it in that lobby?
I told them, forget that.
Okay.
Put it up there.
We've got enough people asked, they, they just wanna see it up there and working.
The last update we got was January twenty-third. I have the mechanical watch supplies email if anybody else wants to talk to him.
Who's our, you're the contact point?
Well, I think Ray had been.
Yes.
And then we had the pictures because they sent us the pictures, so to me it looks like it's. Barely put together.
I don't think a new name coming in and asking questions is gonna do any good. I think we just need to apply some, whoever's been in contact with them. Apply some pressure so if we can get a little better date of when this is gonna take place. Because there are numerous people who would love to see the clock back up there and working.
Sure some of it has to do with the weather because they have to.
Oh, I'm sure.
They'll have to climb clear up and it's gonna be cold up there.
It's almost like government working, kinda hard to put a date on it.
Yeah, sounds like it.
But that wouldn't be easy to put those parts together by hand if you had to make them.
Oh, I, I.
Didn't you say?
I'm guessing, yeah, I'm guessing there's very few people in the country that can do that and make it work.
I mean, once he goes through all that work to get it back up there, we want it to work.
Oh, yeah, I'll bet they're careful with it.
Have you seen those steps to go up there?
You can see them from the outside. If you're coming in from the north, you look up there and you see, I thought, a lot, are those permanent, is that?
You have to come down and we'll take you up for a tour in the bell tower.
I'm scared of heights.
Oh, for real?
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Yeah, I go in the bottom rung of a twenty-foot ladder and that's as high as I go.
Yep, I just took an employee up there last week and never been up there.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure it's neat. I'm sure it is.
Lots of antiques around too, the storage rooms up there.
Wow.
Or in our courthouse basement, you should come look at like all the books, like the tax books we have back when the tax rolls were just printed in a book.
Mm-hmm.
We have to keep all that stuff indefinitely.
Really? And it started in the basement of the courthouse?
Some of it is, some of it's upstairs.
And they're not worried about a flood or anything like that?
Or a fire, I mean, that's why some of that, the real estate records and supervisor minutes is all scanned now.
Okay.
But that was a huge project in ARPA funds. I can't imagine what it would cost to scan all that other stuff.
And that's what you were showing us where you can just type in the word and boom, it pulls up there.
Yep, and that's how I was looking back at the bonds coverage.
Okay.
And trying to see how that took place.
Right.
Which, it is kinda neat. You guys could have access to that too. I can give you the link.
Oh, that might be.
Because you guys are wanting to like see what, something was done, type in a keyword and.
And boom, it comes up.
And it can pop it up.
Because the elevator doesn't go up another floor, does it?
No, it only goes to the fourth floor basically. It lets you out at that part where it's like this and then you gotta go.
Well, you could get up there that way because there's, it's.
That part went scary and that, you can see the books and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the steps to get up to the, the other piece, they're not, they're not your average set of steps.
It is cool, like when flood was there, I was up taking pictures or when that fire crossed the street. And went clear up, took pictures and.
Right.
The windows need wash.
We get the meeting tonight?
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
And I, they all got a copy of that letter.
Okay.
So I plan to attend with you.
Good.
I can't find that little light day when he sent us. I know I printed it off. I gotta hear somewhere about all the things that are to do yet.
It's actually, our walkthrough, that was a. Pretty good surprise for the shape things were in. Just little differences from one building to the next of. And then he knew a lot more of the technical.
We still gotta get the generator out of Norway yet.
Norway and Belle Plaine.
Belle Plaine and the LP tank and.
Yes.
And remember that had fuel in it yet?
Yep.
And that was the thing, if you looked at all the emails there. The switch disappeared.
Yes, they're supposed to be bringing us back a switch for the, uh, Norway tower.
And anyway, they're passing the buck. No, the one at Norway's there, the one at Belle Plaine's gone.
Belle Plaine disappeared.
Yes.
And our clock, or our camera.
And our camera.
Camera.
We know who took the camera down, they just don't have it. They tossed it.
But the transfer switch at Belle Plaine is gone and that, everybody's passing the buck, nobody took it.
I don't buy that.
But it's gone from inside of a locked building.
Yeah.
We don't have cameras on those.
Concrete building.
But nobody.
With no windows.
But nobody, nobody took it.
Who has keys to that building?
The companies that work on.
Wasn't saying not just anybody has it.
No.
Well, it's hanging in its place, it's a good question. New transfer sledge?
Yeah. But I just can't believe for seven hundred and some thousand, they wouldn't finish this project out. I just. I don't understand that.
I don't.
I think they'd be jumping through hoops to get it done.
And if the new owners are, is an investment group.
Don't get it. Anything else, gentlemen?
Uh, let's see, I talked, TikTok, I talked about that.
Okay.
Just East headed out of it on County Home Blacktop where that. Side of the road just drops off into a coal.
I've seen that.
We need to get some cement barriers or something out there before somebody dies. It's just an accident waiting to happen.
Isn't that part of city?
There's an argument. Apparently the city knows about it because I've talked to them. Secondary roads knows about it. They're talking back and forth, but it's been months and we have had no. I mean, it, it appears to me, it'd probably have to be engineered, but it looks like there needs to be. Another piece of culvert set down in there and then the dirt put over it and that affects it, but I'm not a road guy. I don't know what it entails to do that, but in the meantime, we need some cement barriers or something set up there and. For something bad. Before something bad happens.
See then?
I mean, it's the white line and the drop off.
They got orange paint cones, at least they did when I was out.
Yeah, somebody said now the cones are disappearing. I'm most impressed.
They're probably in the ditch.
Probably. I know I stopped and set them back up once.
When Friday, he probably didn't stay.
No, they probably didn't stay.
Hopefully we're done now with pushing snows, they wouldn't have to worry about it.
I mean, we need, I I think there needs to be a protective action taken out there.
Well, stop to talk to Myron about that.
Okay.
I know, like I said, I feel like it's city.
Oh, I'm sure it is. I've looked at the map in city.
So it's inside the city limits?
Yes, I would say it is.
They believe it's our problem because we resurfaced the road and they didn't ask us to.
So we made an improvement to it and.
And they're saying that was the cause.
That's what caused it.
Well, I talked to one guy that says that was, who lives out there and he says that wasn't the cause, but he said it was already like that. And I, I don't know. But as it insists, it's, it's dangerous. And I don't know if the county has any cement barriers that could be put in place. We'd have to put some, some flashing lights or warnings that. You know, we've restricted that that lane is narrow now.
The only problem with that puts cement there, that's how you call it.
Oh, thank you.
That's kind of easier to hit.
Oh, yeah.
And then you're liable.
Well, that's true, you put the barriers up, somebody pounces up and in.
Myron would be the guy that would know how to.
He'd get something done if he closed the road down.
Yeah, we just go out and close the road, I'll bet it gets fixed.
That would work. I'll bring off the.
Buses travel that way, don't they, to Shelsford?
Well, that that's my concern is the school buses, that's my largest concern. One person reported that they saw the outside of the school bus hanging in the air there. I thought, ah, jeez.
Yeah, you're right, that is city on the map.
Well, by the map it is.
By the map it is, yeah.
But the the city says it, it's in the condition it is because of the roadwork.
Is that because the city didn't want to pay to have it paved?
Uh, apparently they did. I don't know, I don't know the ins and outs of it. Of how it all transpired, but that's kind of the the story.
Well, if that's it, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Just one quick, one thing, the that the building out there, the old animal shelter, what did you ever come up with for that?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. I saw the signs were completely down the, for sale and all that was gone, so I just didn't know where that was at.
Yep, it's on hold yet. The county attorney's trying to get a clear title.
Oh, okay.
Where it's, where it's sitting at right now, so.
It's got to be, what do you want to call it? Legally put it up in the deed and abstract and all that.
Okay. I knew because Mike was here when he was talking about it and trying to figure out how they could get around that.
That's where it's at right now. There's three different clauses in it. Which one do you go by? So the judge is going to decide.
Hmm, interesting.
All righty.
Is it?
I'll, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
One second.
Hold the paper?
Aye.
All right.